Good evening, everyone. The May 26, 2020 virtual meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Among other things this evening, we will hear and vote on several bills that were previously[16.68][16.68]introduced, postponed due to the COVID-19 health crisis. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Mr. Pruski?
Here.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Rodvian?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Madam Auditor, Ms. Smith?
Present.
And Madam Legislative Counsel, Ms. Hewitt?
Present.
Madam Chair, all are present.
Thank you. Please pause for the invocation, which will be led by Mr. Volkey this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. In these trying times, it's important for us to remember what binds us together. The basis of our republic is founded on ideas, and they're ideas that bound our founders and bind us today. In lieu of a prayer this evening, I ask that you listen and reflect on these words as I read an excerpt from the Declaration of Independence. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes, and accordingly all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security."
Thank you. For the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Fiedler will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. "The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend those meetings," General Provisioned Articles, Section 3-102(c). "The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the governor's various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, and allowing written public comments to the legislation be filed with the clerk and considered by the council. The County Office of Law has opined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public and therefore complies with the Open Meetings Act."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked, and I advise you, that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Because this is a virtual meeting, we cannot provide reasonable seating facilities for the news media, and we cannot be physically present in Annapolis, the county seat. May I have a motion to suspend Rules 3-103 and 3-106?
So moved. Madam Chair, Sarah Lacy, District 1.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend Rules 3-103 and 3-106.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to suspend Rules 3-106 and 3-103 is passed.
In addition, we cannot provide reasonable seating for the public, and testimony cannot be given in person but has been received through our online testimony tool, has been reviewed by the council members, and is posted online for the public to view, and a count of the submissions will be announced. May I have a motion to suspend Rule 3-105?
So moved. Sarah Lacy?
May I have a second?
Councilman Pruski, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend Rule 3-105.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven, six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to suspend Rule 3-105 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public to be read into the record this evening?
Madam Chair, we have posted 293 general testimony comments, and these have been shared with the council and posted online.
Thank you so much, Madam Secretary. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Lacy.
Is there a second?
Councilwoman Rodvian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 4220, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation and Transfer of Funds. Bill Number 4320, An Ordinance Concerning Self-Insurance Fund, Claims for Payment, Increase Amounts to Be Approved by Central Services Officer.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1720, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Remove the Limit of 1,500 Hours Per Calendar Year for Hourly Rate Contractual Employees in the Exempt Service. Resolution Number 1820, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County Permitting the County Council to Increase the Minimum Value of Purchases in Contracts Requiring Full Competitive Bidding From an Amount Not Less Than $25,000 and Not Greater Than $50,000, pardon me, to an amount not less than $25,000 and Not Greater Than $100,000. Resolution Number 1920, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Modify the Probationary Period for Public Safety Employees and to Provide That a Probationary Period Does Not Run While an Employee is on Certain Paid or Unpaid Leave. Resolution Number 2020, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Expand the Initial Term of An Acting Chief Administrative Office or Acting Head of Any Office or Department to 120 Days and to Allow the County Council to Extend That Term by Up to Two Additional Six-Month Periods. Resolution Number 2120, Resolution Confirming the Adoption of the Anarundel County, Maryland, 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Resolution Number 2220, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Require the Anarundel County Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9-20.
Bill Number 9-20, An Ordinance Concerning 2020 Amendments to the Anarundel County Solid Waste Management Plan 2013.
Thank you. This bill is a county executive bill. I believe Mr. Barron is here with some staff. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Joining me at the virtual table is Mr. Bowen from DPW and Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law. You may recall, we discussed Bill 9-20 at a work session a long time ago. I think it was early March, might even been in February. The primary purpose of Bill 9-20 is to revise the county's solid waste management plan, update references to certain private facilities, as well as the county's expanded composting facility. This plan is done, I believe, every decade, and as the legislative summary notes, it's important to start with the understanding that the inclusion of any private facility in the SWMP, in the solid waste management plan, is not an approval of the facility. It is just a step in the larger process. The proposed revisions recognize some ownership changes, changes in operational statuses, and the closing of a facility. In Council District 1, there's the Curtis Creek Transfer Station. In Council District 3, there's the bio-waste medical or biomedical waste services, which were moving from a reference from proposed to existing. The topsoil, et cetera, facility which no longer exists is being removed. In Council District 4, there's the Tolson and Associates rubble landfill, which were moving from proposed to existing. The Tolson and Associates composting facility, we're adding it to a yard waste processors list, and the Anarundel County's expanded composting facility on Burns Crossing Road, which is permitted under new MDE regulations. I point you all to the Office of Law's summary in the legislative summary, which provides some helpful background that was dated February 18, 2020. State law requires that the governing body of a county adopt any plan revisions. Bill 9-20 brings these updates to you for adoption. We will, we will offer an amendment at the appropriate time. So with that, the folks at the virtual table and I are happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the administration regarding Bill 9-20? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, shall we move forward with the amendment?
We have to open public hearing.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. The public hearing, Madam Secretary, did we have any comments come in about Bill Number 9-20?
Yes, Madam Chair, we've had six submissions of written testimony, which was shared with and reviewed by the council and which was posted on the county website.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 9-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9-20.
Bill Number 9-20, An Ordinance Concerning 2020 Amendments to the Anarundel County Solid Waste Management Plan 2013.
Is there any further discussion? I believe there is an amendment. Mr. Barron, did you want to introduce that? Oh, Madam, Madam Secretary, please read the title. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, This Amendment incorporates the county's office building recycling program into the Anarundel County Solid Waste Management Plan 2013.
You would like, Madam Chair? For the record?
Is there a motion to adopt the amendment?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So moved. Councilman Andrew Pruski.
Is there a second?
Lacy, so moved.
Thank you.
I mean, seconded.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, did you want to introduce this amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologies for jumping the gun. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. As Madam Secretary said, the amendment is to incorporate a new requirement of state law into the county's solid waste management plan. The new law requires each county to address the collection and recycling of certain materials from buildings that are 150,000 square feet or greater of office space. It requires each owner of an office building, subject to the law, to provide receptacles for the collection of paper, cardboard, metal, and plastic from tenants, and to recycle those materials by October 1, 2021. The amendment will insert the office building recycling program, which you should have Exhibit A, and the office building recycling locations, Exhibit B, into Appendix D of the solid waste management plan. The administration identified 17 buildings, all have existing recycling programs, and have reported their recycling information to us voluntarily, so we do not expect any concerns from the administration. With that, we ask you move the amendment.
Is there any discussion for my colleagues on this amendment? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 9-20, as amended, will be heard on June 15, 2020. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 12-20, as amended.
Bill Number 1220, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision Development, Adequate School Facilities, Low-Income Tax Credits.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Lacy is the sponsor of this bill. Did you want to speak to the amended bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District 1. I am the only sponsor of this bill, and the administration worked to craft four amendments, which were passed the last time that we heard this bill. The bill now reflects the intent, which was the original intent of, of the bill, to provide ways for low-income housing tax credit projects that where the project has received these low-income tax credits from the state, to make sure that those projects go through. And the amendments, both with the amendments and I believe before it was amended, overall there's a minimal to no impact on the school system, but there will be an unmeasurable impact, immeasurable impact on the students who will be able to go to, go to schools and live in neighborhoods that they may not otherwise have the opportunity to access in this county. So with that, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Would the administration like to weigh in on the amended 1220?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table from the Office of Law is Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. In the virtual audience, we have, if there are questions, from AACPS, Mr. Shagnovich from Office of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Rhodes from ACDS, Ms. Koch from Housing, Mr. Martin. As we stated in the previous hearing, we appreciate the sponsors working with the administration to craft some narrowing amendments to ensure that this bill is as narrow as the sponsor intended. It's received a fair amount of attention, but it is a very small bill that really addresses the technical reality of the timing on how tax credit developments are financed. This bill is, is limited. It will not reopen every school in the county, and with the additional amendments that passed the previous, the previous time this bill was heard, the administration is confident that this bill will do some good, and we look forward to signing the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council on this bill? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Just some question for Office of Law. In the bill language, it says that the capacity can not go over 3% of state, forgetting the actual language of it, over state-rated capacity, but then we reduced it to what we have in our county code for adequate public facilities, which is 95% capacity for elementary and middle schools, and then 100% for middle schools. Is Office of Law interpreting that to be 98% with this bill, or are we looking at 103% and 105%? Because it references state capacity.
Sorry, Lori Blair Klausmeyer, but it says state-rated capacity, but it references 175502 of the county code, so I believe that would be 3% of the 95% or 100% of whatever other percentage is in 175, the various sections of 175502.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to contribute that it is, the bill is written as percentage points, not as a percentage of the referenced section of limit that the council has imposed. So, so when you say the state has, the state rates a school at a capacity of 100, the council has adopted law that says the capacity shall be no more than 95, and this bill will make it so that for these specific types of projects, it would go up to possibly 98, not 3% of 95. And then likewise with high schools, we have, the county has set our limit at 100, just like the state has 100, so we'll go to 105. No, not necessarily 5% of 100, but that way, I wrote it that way with reference to the statutory language, so that if we change the statutory language apart from this bill, we don't need to revisit the limits in the bill.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a robust debate about this bill the last time it was before the council, so I'm not going to add a whole lot, other than to say that I appreciate my colleague's intent with this bill, and I appreciate the problem that she is trying to come up with a solution to, and I respect that, but unfortunately, I won't be able to vote in support of it because I'm not going to cast my vote in favor of anything that I anticipate will add crowding to schools. So that's going to be where I come down on this, but I do just want to appreciate the work that I know that Councilwoman Lacy has put into this, so I just leave my comments there.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add some comments about why I plan to support this bill. I really believe that there, this is a very detailed and a rather complex bill, and I think that there's been, at least based on some of the communication that I've received about it, I think there's just a lot of confusion about what this bill does and what this bill doesn't do. This bill is not about helping developers. That's not something I'm interested in doing, and I'll reiterate that I have not taken any campaign funds from developers or the development community. In order to apply, in order to be accepted for this program, a developer that wants to create housing, low-income housing, and receive the tax credits that go with it, they have to meet a very rigorous test, where they're given points for all different, a range of criteria, including, is it near public transportation, and things like that. This bill, in my opinion, is not about overdevelopment. It's not about overcrowding schools. We have schools that are well beyond, you know, what this bill would allow, that are, you know, that are still functioning fine. And I say this as a teacher who's working in a rather crowded school, that's about to receive a 10-classroom addition because it's rather crowded, but this bill doesn't come anywhere close to that. And I think it's really about, you know, trying to make a very small dent into the 19,000 Anarundel County families that are on waiting lists for housing. Housing, everybody knows, it's no shock that housing is expensive in this county, and, you know, I hear people say, "We can't build any more housing. People need to stop moving here." The folks that will receive this housing, that will benefit, are already living here, and they're working here. They're the people that work at your local neighborhood Safeway, they work at Target. They work in a lot of the lower-wage jobs that we all benefit from in the county, and they deserve to have a place in the county to live as well. I, I think, especially as a teacher, I'm sympathetic to the idea of overcrowding, overcrowded schools, but let's make sure we're not confusing overcrowded schools and overcrowded classrooms. Overcrowded classrooms come because we don't hire enough teachers. Overcrowded schools come because we don't build enough schools. So this does not necessarily have any impact on the number of students in a class. This has an impact on the number of students in a school. So in the extreme case, it might require a school at a portable classroom, but given the very, very low threshold above what's already required under our county law, I don't even really believe that that's likely. This may mean that hallways are a little bit more crowded, and I've had a lot of folks comment about, well, you know, at a time when we're dealing with a worldwide pandemic, should we be adding any crowding to schools? Well, we're going to have to address the number of students in our schools and figuring out a way to get, you know, to make sure that we have safe numbers of students in the schools, no matter what. And most importantly, as a teacher, I've seen students who've had to deal with homelessness, who've had to deal with, you know, not having a regular place to sleep at night. They sleep at, you know, one relative's house one night, then they sleep at friend of parent's house, then they sleep at grandmother's house. And the idea that we could provide even a very small number of families, families with children that are pretty much already in our public schools, and not likely to be adding to the number of students, is absolutely something I want to support. So I really just wanted to clear up some of the misperceptions about this bill, and make it clear that, to me, this bill is about providing affordable housing. It's not about overdevelopment. It's about allowing people that already live in the county to have a decent and affordable place to live. And I'm sure I have more to say about it, but I can see my colleagues are waiting, so thank you, and I will be supporting this bill.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we have to get to public testimony on this bill, but just for clarification, because the, the title of teacher was used a few moments. But just for clarification, because the title of teacher was used a few moments for the record, is Councilwoman Roddian speaking on behalf of any organization of teachers?
Ms. Roddian.
Thank you, woman, or thank you, Councilwoman Fiedler. I actually am really grateful that you raised that. I am not speaking on behalf of any organization of teachers. I'm speaking strictly from my own experience. And I apologize for not making that clear. And I appreciate you raising that to make it clear for everyone listening that, you know, I realize that I may have colleagues who disagree. And that's, this is just my personal opinion from my experience. Thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Jessica Hare, District 7. I'll keep this brief. I appreciate the intent of Councilwoman Lacy, and I certainly appreciate the comments from Councilwoman Roddian. I don't see the two as mutually exclusive. I don't think that we can't find a place for these projects in the community and also not overcrowd our schools. I think we talked a little bit about this when this bill was up before. I think rather than sort of addressing the overcrowding piece on the back end, I think if we address the manner in which and the timeline in which the seats are allocated to the students, to the project at the time a project applies, rather than at the time they are awarded, we avoid this whole problem with the, you know, the schools are open when they apply, but then they've closed by the time they receive the award vest earlier, account for them in the allocation. And then to the extent that the project's not awarded, you can release those seats. I think the work group on adequate public facilities committed to addressing this. And in that sense, we avoid the overcrowding because we are taking into account these seats that might be needed. And that's, that's the way, I think, moving forward, we need to address this bill. So I understand the intent, but I can't support this bill at this time.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for the administration. Do you have anybody on in the waiting room or already on screen tonight who can speak to Councilwoman Hare's concern?
I'm going to ask Ms. Rhodes from OPC to join us. I think she's probably best equipped to answer questions about how the complicated process goes. If she can, I'll ask for Ms. Kathy Koch to join as well.
Or perhaps both. They have different perspectives that are relevant to this process, so I would appreciate that.
Yeah. Well, let's see, Ms. Koch and...
Ms. Koch, since you're present, did you want to add anything to Ms. Hare's comments?
Well, I, Madam Chairman, Kathy Koch, Executive Director of Community Mountain Services. I don't feel equipped to answer the question about planning, zoning's process and when that is done. So I would defer to Ms. Rhodes to answer that question. If the, and how that interplays with the low-income housing tax credit application process. You know, I can certainly answer that. I do know that the state of Maryland has recently, in the last couple of years, had application process open once a year, usually around this time of the year, except for because of the situation right now would be in September this year. It usually takes them six to eight months to make their award. And then once the award is made, they then, the developer then begins the serious process of coming through our site plan review process.
Thank you, Ms. Koch. Mr. Barron, I don't see Ms. Rhodes coming forward.
I was just told that she might be having some technical problems and may have had her Zoom kick her out, so.
Okay.
Ms. Hare, is it, would it, or Ms. Lacy, you asked the question. Would it be appropriate if we followed back up with you in the interest of time? Or do we want to see if we can fix the technical glitch?
Well, perhaps you'd want to follow up with Ms. Hare. I think the question that she is suggesting should be asked in the future is how do we process potentially saving and allocation of seats at a school? And if this bill does not do that, but she feels that it should be in a bill, she can bring a bill, is what I'm trying to convey. But I don't think that's necessary for this bill 1220 versus possibly being able to work out something where there is an internal administrative policy, essentially, that says if you're going to apply for these projects, you should make sure that Office of Planning and Zoning knows that you're applying. But if she feels it needs to be part of the law, then I will respectfully request my colleagues' vote yes on the bill as it is tonight.
Just to respond, Pete Barron, for the record, it was referenced, the administration has put together an inadequate public facilities work group on school issues. And this would certainly be a subject as well to raise in that work group. And that has been a little delayed, given the current state of world. But the administration fully intends to pick that work back up once we're able to resume some semblance of normalcy.
I do appreciate that. I'm also a participant in the overall adequate public facilities work group, so I intend to be informed. But I wanted to ensure that the administration has heard Ms. Hare's concern.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. I had, I had a fantastic opportunity last week to meet with the League of Women Voters, who, when this bill was introduced, sent us all testimony in opposition to the bill. And in lieu of some recent dialogue about rhetoric versus reality, we really got to take an opportunity through a Zoom meeting just like this to break down some of the rhetoric surrounding this bill and really get to the reality. And the reality is, this county has built low-income tax credit housing about one, about one community every five years since 1963. It represents about less than 1% of our housing units. And yet, our percentages, and Ms. Koch can probably get more detailed, the percentage of families in Anarongo County living in rental housing and paying more than 40% of their income for that housing is outrageous. So while we do have competing needs with school capacity in certain pockets of the county, but we also have an incredible need for affordable, quality, attainable housing for families that are already living here. They're just paying 40 and 50% of their income for housing. So when we think about a 38-unit townhouse community that may or may not yield about 11 students from Meade Middle School, who's currently at 96% occupancy, not 100%, not 110%, but just 96% occupancy, I think the rhetoric has outweighed the reality of the opposition to this bill. We have balance, we have to find balance in this county and policy. Public policy is very, very hard. But when taking the opportunity to sit with five community leaders and really drill down on the issue and the ramifications of the bill, they're now in support. And you all received an email for them, and they are in support of this amended bill. So I was really grateful for them to take the time. And I felt really good that as a community leader, we were really bridging gaps where there had been some divide. So with that, I fully support this bill. And I don't know of anyone else. Are we ready to call the question? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 12-20.
Madam Chair, we have to open a public hearing.
Oh, right. Okay, let's do that. I got all excited. Madam Secretary, we'll now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any public testimony on Bill Number 1220?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have had 88 submissions of written testimony that we shared with and reviewed by the council, and it has been posted on the website.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The public hearing on the amended bill Number 1220 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1220 as amended.
Bill Number 1220, An Organs Concerning Subdivision in Development: Adequate School Facilities Low-Income Tax Credits.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll just be brief. I think I laid out where I stand on this bill the last time we heard it. I just truly believe that it's creating a loophole in capacity in schools. So for that reason, I will not be supporting it this evening.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 12-20 as amended.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Roddian.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill 1220 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, this is Allison Pickard, Chair, District 2. Please read the title of Bill Number 17-20.
Bill Number 1720, An Organs Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes Tax Credits, 911 Specialist Tax Credits.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is a county executive bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. Once again, Pete Barron with the county exec. I am being joined at the virtual table by Mr. Beecham from Budget, Ms. McQuaid from Finance, and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. Bill 17-20 is an amendment to existing county code, Article 4, Title 2, Section 312. This is the Public Safety Officer's Property Tax Credit. This will add 911 public safety specialists, as defined in the Emancipated Code of Maryland, as eligible for the tax credit. During the 2019 legislative session, the General Assembly passed Senate Bill 284, which was subsequently approved by the governor that expands the eligibility to public safety telecommunicators. So the 911 specialists, as we call them, include employees of a county public safety answering point or working in a county public safety answering point. 911 specialist duties and responsibilities include receiving and processing 911 requests for emergency assistance and other supportive functions directly related to 911 requests for emergency assistance. I don't think I need to expand on why the work these men and women do is so critical to our public safety infrastructure. These, there's approximately 105 employees in the police department, 25 in the fire department, and five in OIT. The Office of Finance will be developing several documents in order to implement the program, which includes an application, procedures, and approval sheets. They will follow a similar approval process as public safety officers. The, you don't just get the credit if you have to apply. The employee who's eligible has to live in the county and be working in a, in a job that the state law allows in order to be eligible for this credit. Personnel will be involved in the approval and certification process for eligibility. So with that, we ask that the council approve this bill. And I neglected to mention, I do have a couple of folks in the waiting room if there are additional questions. Captain Hashenbush from Police, Chief Lane from Fire, and our OIT director, Mr. Napolitano. So with that, happy to answer any questions. And hopefully, we will be able to give a couple of our hard-working folks a little bit of an additional benefit. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. This is Allison Pickard, District 2 Chair. Are there any questions for my colleagues regarding Bill 17-20? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As with everything that is a tax credit, I just want to clarify a couple of points before we vote. I don't know who the correct person in the administration is to answer this, so I'll just ask the question. As I understand it, with these types of bills, and there have been other bills like this before the council in the past, what it effectively does is shifts the tax burden from the individuals who are receiving the tax credit to the rest of the tax base. Am I understanding how that works? We're not actually getting less money, we're just getting it from different places?
Thank you, Councilman. I think Mr. Beecham is probably best equipped to answer that question.
Mr. Beecham, you have the floor.
Thank you. Jim Beecham, Budget Officer for Anarongo County. Councilwoman Volkey, you are correct. In the situation where the legislative body accepts the tax cap rate as the tax rate for the county, in that situation, the credits are used in the calculation to consider the taxes on all of the taxpayers in the county.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other questions for the administration regarding Bill 17-20? We will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary.
We have had no submissions of testimony for Bill 1720.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 17-20.
Bill Number 17-20, An Organs Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes Tax Credits, 911 Specialist Tax Credits.
Is there any further discussion? I believe, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, I appreciate the administration answering that. I do plan to support this because I think it's an important incentive that we are providing to really important people who are involved in our public safety, who often do not get enough credit. And so I will support this bill. But I did want to clarify the impact of our vote. And so with that said, as a taxpayer in this county, this is the type of thing that I'm willing, at this point, to sit there and say, I will pay a little more to make sure that these folks get a cut on their tax bill because they deserve it, and they work very hard for it, and they should be incentivized. So I just want to clarify why I asked the question because I know sometimes people get confused by why I ask particular things and just give a statement as to where I'll be on this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. I stumbled upon some interesting information. The Homeland Security Act of 2002 defines the term first responder as individuals who, in the early stages of an incident, are responsible for the protection and preservation of life, property, evidence, and the environment. Who better, by this definition, can be considered a first responder than the dispatcher who is the start of everything? From picking up the phone to creating the record in the computer-aided dispatch CAD system with the first keystroke of sending out the first wave of help, all while providing lifesaving instructions. Dispatchers are the nucleus of any emergency event. And that is so true, and we know that to be true here in Anarongo County. And I'm not sure if they were left out of the original public safety tax credit because of the state-enabling legislation didn't allow them. But I'm glad, for whatever reason, that we are entertaining this bill this evening. It is an excellent incentive. It is added, can be viewed upon as a nice part of their benefits package when accepting the role, and will help us bring in quality folks into the role. So I thank the administration for bringing it forward. I believe there is an amendment to this bill. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment removes the discretionary administrative fee for the real property tax credit for 911 specialists.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number 1?
I moved. Jessica Hare.
Jessica Hare, District Seven.
Is there a second?
Second. Fiedler.
Ms. Hare, this is your amendment, I believe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. This actually came to me, our Legislative Council, Ms. Schewitt emailed around noting that this fee was discretionary, which struck me as a little bit odd that maybe some people might be charged the fee and some people might not be charged the fee. And then, looking more closely, it's a 1% fee, a maximum of $25. And I believe in the fiscal note we saw, it's like $1,600 that the county may receive for this. I'll be honest, it struck me that the accounting that you would have to do just to track that administrative fee may take more time than the administrative fee generates in revenue. And it just seemed a little illogical, I suppose, to charge a fee for someone to receive a credit. So I just thought that, why don't we just do away with the $25 fee and allow them to apply and give the credit?
Thank you. Does the administration have a response to Amendment Number One?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. Appreciate the sponsor of the amendment, bringing this issue to our attention. So let me be clear about something. This fee is applied across the board. So there is, the administration, as far as we've been able to find, doesn't pick and choose. It's, if you're in this class, you're getting charged the fee. What I think it's perfectly reasonable for the council to do away with this fee. But I do want to point something out before we remove it on this class of employees. The other people who benefit from this tax credit, the firefighters, the police officers, are paying that fee. So the administration would ask if the council does remove this fee, that we remove it for all. And that financial impact is, across the whole class, is pretty negligible. It would be, I believe Ms. McQuade can give the exact figure, but it's somewhere around, it's less than $20,000.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Barron, actually, I had that very conversation with Ms. Schewitt earlier today. I think the consensus was, we would need a separate bill to remove those other fees. But if this amendment passes, I can commit to bringing a separate bill to remove the $25 fee for the police-fire tax credit that is already in place.
As I stated, sorry, Madam Chair.
Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Pete Barron for the administration. As I stated, the administration has no issue with the removal of the fee. It is a matter of equity that if we remove it for one, we should remove it for all.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments regarding Amendment Number One? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Because I prefer that we keep it consistent with current law and do one bill that then removes all fees, I vote nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Bill Number 17-20 as amended will be heard on June 15, 2020. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 18-20.
Bill Number 18-20, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes Tax Credits Public Safety Officer Tax Credits.
This is also a county executive bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Good evening again. For the record, Pete Barron, joining me at the virtual table, or perhaps never leaving the virtual table, is Ms. McQuade from Finance and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. Bill 18-20 simply reflects that the application for the public safety officer tax credit is on a form provided by the Controller's Office. This change reflects a change in state law that moved the administration of the tax credit from the State Department of Assessments and Taxation to local jurisdiction. As of, I think it's July 1, 2019, as that is no longer involved in the application process. With that, we would ask you, Mr. Barron.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary.
Sorry, Madam Chair. We've had no submissions of written testimony for Bill 18-20.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 18-20.
Bill Number 18-20, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes Tax Credits Public Safety Officer Tax Credits.
Is there any further discussion on this bill? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 18-20.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 18-20 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 37-20.
Bill Number 37-20, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Revenue Reserve Fund.
This is sponsored by Mr. Volkey, Ms. Hare, and Ms. Fiedler. Who would like to introduce this bill this evening? Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I think the auditor laid out a nice explanation of what this does in a blue letter. This addresses an issue, not every issue, as it pertains to bond rating. Really, what this will do, it doesn't commit the county to do anything. It simply increases the ceiling on our rainy day fund, which is the Revenue Reserve Fund. So at this point, what you would be voting for is simply to increase the ceiling from 5% to 10%. And the reason for that is, when we go in front of the bond rating agencies, as I think everyone knows, we've talked about this already previously, but it's one of the things that bond rating agencies look at. This year, we are a few million dollars off of the 5% cap. If we can get there this year, that would be wonderful if we can get there. If not, this just increases the ceiling to allow us to potentially put more in this year. And maybe if things get better and we can use more in the future, that works too. I know some people have expressed to me their concern that 10% isn't the appropriate ceiling, that maybe we should go from 5 to 7, or we should go from 5 to 8, 5 to 7 and a half. I'll be candid with you. If you want that bill, if the council says to me, you know, many like colleagues say, which I haven't heard from, but if that's what you say, is that you want to go to 7% or 8%, that's a bill you'd support, let me know. Let's put in that amendment. I'll make a motion to hold this bill. We'll get it right, we'll clean it up, and then we'll come back with it at the next meeting next week. But, you know, so far, I haven't heard anything in terms of what the other right number might be. So if you have that, I look forward to that as part of the discussion this evening. Otherwise, I would hope that we can all get together and support this because, again, it doesn't commit the county to doing anything. It simply raises the ceiling on the ability to put money away in case the bad times come, and they may be coming.
Would the administration like to weigh in on emergency bill Number 37-20? Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is Mr. Trumbauer, also from the administration, Mr. Beecham from Budget, Ms. McQuade from Finance, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Raising the Revenue Reserve Fund is an admirable policy goal. The proposed FY '21 budget takes the fund to a balance of about $80 million, which is the most the fund has ever had in it. So let me make this clear. The Pittman administration agrees that a robust rainy day fund is important. And we took, in the proposed budget, this fund to record levels. This bill does send mixed messages and maybe a little bit confusing to the public and to some bond agencies. It is, that said, it is well within the council's purview as the final fiscal authority to set the number that it feels appropriate for the cap on the Revenue Reserve Fund. So we ask that the council either reject this bill or pull back and do a little bit more homework because we have taken this account to record levels. So let me turn it over to a former councilman who does know a little bit about this issue, Mr. Trumbauer.
Mr. Trumbauer, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer with the County Execs Office. So I just wanted to weigh in for a second, and I'll defer specific questions about the meetings with the bond rating agencies to either Ms. McQuade or Mr. Beecham. But really, I think the administration views this bill as a matter of timing. I mean, we submitted a budget to you that does not max out the current ceiling at 5%. And the fiscal year that's approaching us is likely going to be a fiscal year that has unmet revenue needs. So the sponsor has characterized this as fiscal policy that the bond rating houses would like to see. And I don't want to speculate for the bond rating houses, but I will speculate about the timing. And I think that it's unlikely that the county is going to be in a position to add gobs of money to this fund in the coming years. And although it may be true that having a higher percentage could be attractive to the bond rating houses, the trade-off of that is, right now, we're able to tell the bond rating houses, we've almost maximized our fund. And we've been working towards that since the last recession, I think, in the, probably in the 2013 range. And so previously, in 2015, we increased modestly the percentage that you are allowed to, the ceiling that you're allowed to have in this fund. And we've been working steadily towards that. Unfortunately, I think that that progress is likely to be stalled for some amount of time as we have hit this economic insecure time. But I would rather tell the bond rating houses that we have an $80 million fund and that we've deliberately built it up to the max to then all of a sudden have to explain to them why we're only at 50% of our ceiling. So again, I'll defer the specific questions to Ms. McQuade or Mr. Beecham about that fund. But I would ask the council to carefully consider the message that this bill would be sending at this time in midst of our local economy and the budget that is before you now.
Thank you. Did Mr. Beecham want to weigh in at all at this point?
If it pleases the chair, I'll wait for specific questions.
No problem. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm chuckling to myself because I'm laughing about this concept that we're somehow sending mixed messages. We literally just passed a bill that is going to add crowding to schools, whether you want to call it school classrooms or schools themselves or whatever, in the name of affordable housing. But yeah, we're concerned about the mixed messaging that's going to come out from increasing the rainy day fund ceiling. And I'm just, I'm sort of baffled by that. So that's confusing to me. In terms of the timing, I don't understand that at all other than this is just something that the administration doesn't want to see happen because somehow this would suggest that maybe we should put more money into the rainy day fund, and that's a conversation you all don't want to have. That's the only thing I can understand from this. Because basically, what I'm hearing is, it's a laudable policy goal, makes sense, something we should consider, don't do it right now. Hold off. Because at this point, since we're in the middle of the budget, you know, it would just be confusing to people if we put this out. Well, I guess I give people more credit than that because I think they're not going to be confused by it. I think everybody's going to understand what this is. And it's basically an effort to try to give us another avenue to keep preparing for, what I agree, Mr. Trumbauer, are tough times coming. But it's, again, confusing to me how we're talking about the tough times coming. When I saw the budget presentation, which effectively projects that next year everything's going to be back to, you know, good times again, that we're going to be back where we were last year for the budget. So again, the messages that are coming out are kind of baffling to me. And the only thing that I can make from this, and I'll be very blunt when I say this, is I think that there's a sponsor problem with this bill, and I think that's the issue. So I think that other than that, this is a laudable policy goal. And I would hope that you all would support it, but I'm disappointed to see that you're not. I would hope my colleagues can see the value of this policy proposal and we can move forward.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilwoman Rodvian, District Six. I actually hadn't discussed this issue with the administration, but I identified the same concern that they did, is that I would be interested in looking at this issue, but I have concern with the timing. You know, as everyone has looked at the budget, we are, we're not headed for hard times. We're in hard times, and we may be headed for more hard times. And I feel like, you know, once we recover, we'll be in a much better position to assess what do we need? In fact, I would hope that this is the most difficult financial time that any of us in any of our communities experience in our lifetimes. And I feel like after we've recovered, is a much better time to look back. We'll have the experience of riding, you know, getting through this, getting through the bottom of this valley and coming back up and saying, okay, this is how we did it. Did we have enough to, you know, to ride out, to ride out a really rough storm? And, you know, I think in the middle of that storm is a very odd time to start thinking about saving for the next, for the next possible crisis. You know, we need to be focused on, you know, addressing the crisis right now. And once we have the benefit of hindsight, looking back at all of our experience from this, I think we'll be much better situated to determine, was 5% enough? Because at this point, we can't, you know, as Mr. Trumbauer said, we can't. You know, we're not in a position to be adding lots of money to this fund. So, you know, I think once we have the experience of, for the benefit of hindsight, we'll just be in a better place to look at this. And I would be happy to do that, you know, once we, you know, like I said, ride out the storm, which hopefully will be sooner rather than later, but, you know, none of us know.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I see this in a completely different lens than Councilwoman Rodvian. I think being prepared for the worst and allowing ourselves the flexibility to put more in the rainy day fund that we are currently limited to is being responsible. It is taking advantage of what we have right now and kind of stowing it away above and beyond what we currently can. Because if we're going to not take any action until after the fact, I don't think that protects any of the taxpayers in this county. And that is the reason I am co-sponsor of this bill. And I see it very differently than the administration and my colleague right now.
Ms. Hare, did I see your hand raised? You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Couple of questions on the timing. I mean, theoretically, we're not going to max out, even if we raise the ceiling, it's not going to get maxed out in any one year. So at some point, no matter when we do it, we would be at sort of only a 50% capacity of the ceiling. Is that, is that a fair statement, Mr. Beecham?
Yes, ma'am. By calculation of the proposed FY '21 budget, we would be allowed to have a balance in this fund of a little over $84 million. And as we've proposed this budget with a $1 million contribution, we will be at $80.9 million. So we're a little over $3 million short of what we could be allowed now. I think in terms of timing, if I may interject this, when the Controller's Office, Ms. McQuade was pursuing our bond rating, the Budget Office supported her efforts there. This was one of the topics that I addressed with the bond council, not the bond council, excuse me, the bond rating agencies. And it was easy... And it was easy to explain to them that we were near the cap. It was easy to explain to them that we um kept this near the top as well we could. I don't think, as Mr. Trumbauer said, it would be as compelling of a, of a pitch at this point to say that, eh, we're halfway there. Um, everybody knows this is a tough time. We've contributed all we can. Uh, perhaps when we can see more liquidity and when we can put together um a plan that allows us to march towards a cap increase, that might be a more appropriate time. But right now, it doesn't seem like um it does as much good as we can't even get to the cap that we're allowed to now based on our, our budget constraints with the pandemic.
So, but just, just so I understand, sorry, Jessica Hare, District Seven. I mean, whether we do this this year, next year, two years down the road, um, no matter what sort of um year we're having, the year you raise the ceiling, you're always going to have that, with that one year, you're going to have to tell the bond companies, yes, we're at half the, the amount right now. We've, you know, our council has just raised the ceiling and we're going to continue working towards a higher amount. That, that piece of it has no effect on the timing, whether we do it now or three years from now, we're always going to have that problem in that, that first year.
Uh, unless that first year, we are poised to breach the five percent and can say the legislation is in concert with our forecast for a stronger future.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first, I think it's important in case uh not all the members of our audience heard the beginning of this meeting, um, but a certain councilman began this meeting with fighting words and now is claiming that um it is a, a shock that other members on the council and the administration think this bill is a political move with political timing. But that's because it is. You've brought an emergency ordinance or an emergency bill, which is going to require the vote of five members to pass. So the only reason to bring it as an emergency is so that it would take effect before we vote on the county budget, which would then give you the opportunity to argue that more money should be put in the rainy day fund for, an argument from which you would benefit whether or not we reach or go above five percent. Problem is practically no one in this county would agree that they can put away extra money at this time and neither can we. I think nearly 80 million is a pretty darn good sum, is the way I think of it. That's a nice elementary school. If you want to double it to 160 million, so if, you know, one of our high schools went kaput, we had to totally replace it, we had the cash on hand to do that, that's the luxury, that's the extravagance. And I think the bond ratings, uh, the bond companies for one are not the ultimate judges of the policy, the fiscal policy of this county. We have the cash, they don't have our cash, we do. And part of what they like about it is that last year, in last year's budget, we created the Permanent Public Improvement Fund, which I know none of you supported, you sponsors of this current bill now, but that bill is part of what the bond agencies actually like because we've brought in a bondable revenue stream, which I think is something like $250 million. That was prudent policy. I'm happy to have this discussion in the future, but not right now in the middle of a crisis. And I'd be happy to talk about what the percentage, you know, would be that makes sense, but not now in the middle of a crisis. And that's why I'm voting no on this bill.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I can see where this is going, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I do want to make this point about the timing of this bill. Uh, yes, it would be, if it's an emergency ordinance and takes effect, something that would be available as an option for this county in this current budget, if we can find real $1 million in savings, that we would be able to put money into the rainy day fund. I do think that that would be something that's a laudable goal. I would also say, we're not necessarily in crisis from a county government standpoint. Families are in crisis, people in our county who lost their jobs or are furloughed are in crisis. We're looking at a budget that grows this county again by 1.4%. Not a single person has lost a job, no one's making less money. In fact, the county budget is still growing and it's going to grow by, you know, again, a good sum. I, I don't have it in front of me, the exact number, but I, it's a 1.4% increase, I remember that. And so considering that that is a growth of our budget, we're not really looking at being in a spot where we can't afford to make potentially cuts to save for additional bad times, which we expect are coming. But, you know, I, I can see where this is going, so like I said, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I do think that this is what we should do. I think as a council, it makes sense. I guess I'm going to be on the wrong side in this one too.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this question is actually from Madam Auditor, um, Amanda Fiedler, District Five, I'm sorry. Could you speak to your fiscal note a little bit about um how this would, how this would show stability during an economic downturn um as far as ratings are concerned? So one of the things that the bond rating company, uh, bond rating agencies have said historically for why um Anarondo County isn't at a higher rating, it's, you know, when they do a rating, they do positives, they do negatives. One of the negatives is, has always been that our reserves are not high enough. That's just one of the things that always come in. Now, you know, we do have positives, you know, there are things that are positive that come into the rating, but that's one of the things that um is listed as negative. So um I don't know whether, you know, at this point, whether we can put more money into the revenue reserve fund this year or not, but I do think that it is a step in the right direction to increase the amount that you can put in. Um, just looking back at prior recessions where we had to pull from other sources because um there wasn't really, you know, well, we ended up pulling from other sources. Um, you know, other funds within the, like the garage vehicle fund or the garage working fund that maybe we wouldn't have had to pull from had we had a higher reserve balance at that time. Um, and I can also speak on this and that's as revenue grows and your county grows, you do need a larger reserve fund. Um, so those are the reasons why I said it was like a positive to increase um the rate, uh, the amount that's in the revenue reserve fund. I do think we are in, you know, a strong, we do have a strong balance in the revenue reserve fund because we're close to the five percent. So I do think, um, you know, we're better than we have been over these past years. Um, we've been growing our reserve fund back up to the max because from the last recession, it went, um, you know, it had, we had to pull out of it in 2008, 2009, and now we're building it back up and we're almost at the top. So um I do think we're stronger now, but um, but I do think that the, um, you know, whether it's 10% or not, that's, you know, but I, I would say that as a whole, the rating agency would like to see a higher reserve for our county.
Madam, Madam Auditor or Mr. Beecham or Mr. Trumbauer for that matter, um, we've had some conversations about this, um, the bond ratings and there are some other negatives that go along with that bond rating from Moody's. Um, one is the tax revenue cap. They don't really like that tax revenue cap. So talking about one negative in a silo is not um telling the entire picture. Am I correct, Mr. Beecham?
I think that is correct. There were several, several issues that uh the bond rating agencies pointed to as possible reasons um for a, a lower rating than we might wish. One thing I wanted to add to Madam Auditor's comments, if I may, she's correct that the county, I wasn't here, um, but as I study history, she's correct in that the county did pursue cuts in other departments and other areas, but the, the code does compel the county to look to other areas. Um, in section four dash 11 dash 106, paragraph D down near the bottom, it says, you look for all reasonable reductions in expenditures before you can tap the revenue reserve fund. So I think they work in concert and the, the code specifies a sequence in which we look to other resources um in a fiscal year where we're having a shortfall in revenue.
Uh, uh, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumbauer at the County Execs Office. Uh, I just, I just wanted to make one point because we're, we're spending a lot of time and conversation about what the bond rating houses will or won't do or what, what they think about. I just want to remind the council, we have a triple A rating from one bond house and we have a double A one from the other. Like, we're doing pretty good. We get good interest rates, we do well on our bond sales. Um, what, what you're talking about, if you're, if you're doubling the revenue reserve fund, is the opportunity to stockpile more taxpayer money in, in a savings account, which is generally good. Um, but what's the trade off of that? I, I mean, how much better can you get than triple A? Uh, we could get a tiny little bit better than, than double A one, but I, I don't know that any of us understand the practical outcome of that. Instead of a really good bond interest rate, we get a really, really good bond interest rate. Um, so I, I just, I think, I think the more appropriate conversation is what is the appropriate level of the fund for when and if we have to use it to shore up the budget shortfall? I think, I think we're, we're spending a little bit too much conversation around the incremental difference between our already awesome bond rating and making it a fraction of a little bit better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is Allison Picker, Chair, District Two. I actually have a couple of questions, um, because this, this was not on my mind before the sponsor brought it forward and he knows I disagree on the emergency nature of the bill, but that's for another time. But um can the administration shed some light on the difference between our contingency fund and our revenue reserve fund and how they're both accessed for the public and for the council as a... Is that a Mr. Beecham question?
I presume you, uh, this is Jim Beecham, Budget Officer. Uh, I presume you're referring to the CIO contingency fund and that is an annually budgeted line item that is primarily intended to be available in the event of a snowstorm through the winter.
Thank you. And so can you tell us and then the folks watching at home, what fiscal realities would force us or allow us to access the revenue reserve funds in a given year?
Yes, ma'am, Jim Beecham again, please. Um, the portion of the charter, the code rather, that refers to this, I, I can read it to you if you'd like. Um, during the course of a fiscal year, the county executive with approval of the county council by ordinance may authorize a transfer from the revenue reserve fund to general fund revenues in the current expense budget. In other words, you can't plan to use it, you only use it when you find yourself in a problem. To fund existing appropriations, if the county executive determines that revenues for the current fiscal year will be below the estimated revenues, relied on to fund the current expense budget and all reasonable reductions in expenditures have been made and will not be sufficient to offset the anticipated shortfall. So using the revenue reserve fund has a sequence of hurdles to clear before the county executive would bring it to council to utilize that. The um, the contingency fund, we've used occasionally through this year uh with less stringent hurdles, but it's still a reserve fund that is held back for unforeseen events such as a snowstorm.
Thank you, sir. So I've had the opportunity to review some of the, the revenue reserve policies from the other large counties and they're all very, very different and it's, it's very interesting. I was most intrigued by the work of Frederick County to rebuild their reserve funds since 2014. They have a 7% threshold for their revenue reserve fund and another 2% threshold for their contingency fund. It's interesting to contemplate the differences um that both these fiscal management tools play. I'm wondering if the sponsors have researched any other counties when drafting this bill um and then settling on this straight 10% threshold? And I, and I ask that because back in 2015, when this body took up this um issue, we had a different calculation at the time, which ultimately led to a 3.76 um threshold and they raised it through several introductions of a bill over the course of the year of that legislative year, finally settling on it post-passing the budget at a straight five percent. But in 2015, we were in a very different economic climate. Um, we were post-recession, economy was doing really well and they took the opportunity to move from a 3.76% to a 5%. So I am a little concerned about going all the way to 10% without spending some time um in a work group or with finance and budget, trying to figure out what is the right mix um and not looking at it straight as this rainy day fund threshold. So I, I'm throwing it back to the sponsors to see if they have given it any thought or um just decided to go to 10%, 165, 160 million, sounds great. Ms. Fiedler.
I believe uh Councilman Volkey had his flag up first, if he would like to go first, but I'm happy to.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I consulted with Madam Auditor who, after she and I talked, it seemed like 10% was an appropriate threshold because as I, I believe I understood it, uh, that is what the bond rating agencies would like to see. But if I'm hearing from you that you are on board with a 7% threshold, and as I said when I made my opening remarks, I'm more than happy to hold this for another meeting so we can get amendment on this and get, get it moving forward. So uh, if that's what I'm hearing, then that's great, let's do it.
So that's not necessarily what I'm saying, I'm just saying that there's lots of things to consider. Um, I think it's a very interesting um topic to be bringing up. I am concerned that we're not going to be meeting our threshold um this year. And with the economic forecasting that I'm seeing, I don't know when we're going to even begin to chip away or add to get to 160 million along with the economic revenue projections and our other budget priorities in the county. So I think it just needs more time and I'd love to put more heads together. I'm not, I'm not a fiscal policy expert, um, but I've had to do some quick um research just to understand my position and I'm intrigued, I really am. And I think, but I don't think we should be doing this in a vacuum or in a silo. I think we should have a, a pretty deep conversation um about this. But like, I also don't know if you're going to attempt to get beyond the five percent, where are you going to cut it from on June 15th? Like, what's your goal, June 12th, when we strike the budget? Um, that also concerns me because we have a very tight budget. So with that, Ms. Fied-
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Um, I echo the sentiments of Councilman Volkey. Um, and I think I've laid out my reasons for being one of the co-sponsors on this bill and I think it just comes down to a matter of, do we want to prepare for um a, a potential downturn in the economy and, and get that opportunity and the availability to put away um some revenue now? Or do we want to focus on spending in the middle of a, a potential economic downturn? And that's really what I think that it comes down to. Uh, I'm on the side of we should be preparing, um, and that's where I stand.
Ms. Rodby.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Rodby in District Six. I am still just totally baffled by this whole conversation in the middle of a worldwide pandemic. If you are able to find 1 million, 2 million, 3 million dollars extra in this budget, we have small businesses that need help, we have people waiting in food lines, we have people that are losing their homes um or are in jeopardy of losing their homes and we should not be taking our liquidity and stashing it away in a place where it helps no one. Um, this is the time, I, I, I get the impression that um I, that this is, I mean, I don't think any normal person manages their money this way. You know, when you're down to your last dollar, you don't say, I'm going to take this dollar and I'm going to put it in my savings account. You say, I'm going to take this dollar and I'm going to pay my bills or I'm going to buy myself um a meal. I mean, this just doesn't make sense. I can't imagine there would be support, especially at this time, for taking any money that can be pulled from the, um, the sofa cushions in this budget and saying, we're going to put it in a place where no one can touch it right now, when we've got so many people already hurting in this county. when we've got so many people already hurting in this county." I just, I'm, I'm baffled by the timing on this bill, and I will leave it at that, because I think I've already said that twice.
Thank you, Ms. Rodvian. I think there is some, um, concern that, you know, in January, when the Spending Affordability Committee came up to us with their recommendations, we were at like a 3.5% unemployment, and boom, by March 15th, you know, those numbers, we've had an economic shock, not just in Anarodno County, but across the world. So, there's all kinds of debates you can have about countercyclical fiscal policy and all kinds of economists mumbo jumbo, but, um, it's raining. It is raining now. We're not looking ahead to an economic downturn, we're in. We're in a recession. We are in a pretty serious economic downturn. We've turned down. Unemployment is as low as it's ever been. The, the national economy is contracting in epic proportions that we haven't seen in 100 years. So, while I do think there's validity in determining, uh, a different calculation for our rainy day fund, I do think it deserves a larger group to be looking at it and a bigger picture and a little more time, than this council has taken so far. I'm, I welcome the conversation, I welcome the debate, I welcome really doing our homework. This is something that I don't think any of us are experts in. I don't think, whatever we, however this vote goes today, it's going to change the FY '20 budget. I doubt we will see the ability to get beyond our 5% threshold. So it's, it's really not an emergency. It's something this council can take and, and take some time with, and I, I, I really appreciate that when we are able to do that. I've learned a lot on my own, just trying to sort out how this all works, and I think we could all take some more time, um, and come back with a really solid policy. Uh, Mr. Volkey, you had your... You're good? The administration? We will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anything regarding emergency bill 3720?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, we had one submission of written testimony on Bill 3720. It was shared with a review by the council, and it was posted on the county website.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 37-20.
Bill number 37-20, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Revenue Reserve Fund.
Is there any further discussion on Bill 37-20? If, if memory serves, the public testimony received was from Mr. Charles Mannan, who, um, had a lot to say and should maybe be on our work group as a former, uh, staff member in the auditor's office. Am I getting that right? I think that was his, um, he gave us some excellent, um, excellent testimony. I urge the public to read it, um, go online. Um... Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 37-20.
Madam Chair, I will read it in again for vote. Bill number 3720, an emergency... Oh, I did. My apologies.
Well, that's a first, it's always me. No problem.
My apologies.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 27-37-20.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Lacy?
Hey.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Day.
Ms. Fiedler?
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Bill 3720 is defeated.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 38-20.
Bill number 38-20, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Residential Rent Increases During Catastrophic Health Emergencies.
Mr. Pruski, this is your bill, would you... You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Andrew Pruski, uh, District Four. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I, I want to open up, uh, to kind of give a brief statement, and then also explain there are two amendments to the bill. Um, I think it's more important to put in the context of why I introduced this. Um, Bill 3820 was introduced to help protect the residents of Anarodno County from the actions of unscrupulous landlords by temporarily capping rent increases at 3% during the COVID-19 state of emergency. It's difficult right now during a global pandemic to move social distance and pack up your apartment without putting your health or someone else at risk. Temporary restriction will protect landlords from price gouging, and their tenants, uh, at a time when moving is difficult. This started by one constituent emailing me, and then the emails started to flow in of rents being increased from 10, 15, to 20%. Um, some of our surrounding counties, Montgomery, Prince George's, uh, Howard County, and Baltimore City have all passed similar legislation. There was a robust debate about what's there. Um, I did reach out to each of you and actually compromise on some things that I originally came up with the bill that I thought would make this bill a little bit better. At the time when there's so much uncertainty, I think we need to protect Anarodno County residents from certain landlords, not all, that are trying to profit off of people or making the position to make it difficult. Uh, this bill is also supported by many groups, the Maryland Multi-Housing Association, and recently, uh, we had a letter with the, the amendments sort of passed by MBIA. Uh, this rent cap ends 30 days after the governor ends a state of emergency, and the bill sunsets after 120 days of no new state of emergency is declared. Um, just some basic comments, if you read the auditor's letter, I think she pointed out, uh, by the number of calls that the warm line have come in, by the number of people that, uh, are having difficulty paying rent. Uh, in addition, I think it would be unfortunate if this bill did not pass that I would move to Howard County and have rent protection or somewhere else close to us. Uh, we're certainly not wanting people to move right now in the middle of a public health crisis. And I think the other thing is, is that the cap that we're putting on still allows people to have rent increases. And if you look at several sets of data, uh, double CPI, uh, for this area is around 3%, and that's why that was chosen, um, to look at that. Um, and also, the auditor pointed out what we don't have and what we'll, we'll see soon is for those that don't pay the rent at all and don't get the support, that have to leave, and, uh, we won't get any of that revenue in terms of collection of taxes or someone being a resident. So I think overall, um, this is a, a bill that provides some protections. Um, I think it's absolutely ludicrous that we have to even address this, that I have, uh, landlords in my district and throughout Anarodno County that are trying to price gouge um, at a time where, um, you know, the Attorney General of the state of Maryland can, uh, pursue somebody civilly for selling bleach for $30 a bottle, but it can't go after somebody for increasing rent by 20, 30%. Um, there's no protections. Also, one of my colleagues brought up that "Why aren't we doing something for mortgage companies?" Um, the problem with that is that mortgage companies aren't always, um, in, uh, the state of Maryland. Many of them are not. And I called my mortgage company to see if they would provide relief, and they actually said they would. 120 days, uh, extension of payments, uh, removing late fees, um, and other things, and I actually reached out to a couple of banks in our area, and they're also offering that same piece. Um, so certainly, um, if there were a, a law or further protections that we could provide for mortgage companies, I'd certainly look at that. But we are focusing on renters, who, um, a lot of folks who are struggling right now and unable to make it, and I think this is reasonable legislation. This is not an overreach. Uh, this is a matter of trying to do something that's right and protective. And also, uh, I want to finish with this to state that this sunsets. This is not something that's complete rent control, it's temporary. We're in the middle of a pandemic. We had a great discussion earlier about caps for putting in, um, you know, things and other things. I certainly don't want to see, uh, to lose our residents. Um, I like to keep folks here, and I don't, don't think our rental assistance, uh, that we currently have is going to cover the issues that we see. And, uh, to say that the governor and the county executive's eviction program, um, you know, covers, there's no deal, nobody can move, well, you're still paying your rent, and when this ends, uh, we still have to do that. So I certainly think that when we look at the actions and trying to keep people in their homes and make reasonable policy, uh, this is something that makes sense. And I'll leave my comments with there. We do have two amendments that do clarify, um, some of the items. As you know, this was emergency legislation, and like any bill, we're going to try and get it right, and, uh, I'll share those at the appropriate time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, this is Allison Pickard, Chair, District Two. Mr. Barron, would the administration like to weigh in on this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Uh, Ms. Kathy Coke from ACDS, and Mr. Cliff Martin from Housing are, uh, available in the virtual audience. Um, I, I'd like to echo a number of the sentiments the sponsor, uh, laid out to see. This is extraordinary times, uh, and when the sponsor actually called me about a month ago, uh, with the idea, I think what I said to him was, "There's a lot of details to work out, uh, to make sure that the bill is, uh, workable and, and reasonable." And, and I want to commend the sponsor, his team, uh, uh, I believe the, the council attorney was involved in drafting this, uh, and there are some amendments that, uh, come forward, uh, that really do balance the competing interests, which is, I think, why you see, uh, support from the Multi-Family Housing Association, a, a group I know well, a group that doesn't always, uh, see eye to eye, with, with bills like this, but I think they, they looked at it, looked at the extraordinary times, looked at the, the, um, reasonable approach that this bill takes and, and could get behind it, because most landlords are good actors, and most landlords are, uh, not looking to price gouge. This bill is, is really only going to affect, um, the bad actors, the folks that are taking advantage of the situation right now. So, uh, with that, I, I hope that the council will, uh, support this bill. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the sponsor and, um, just reiterate the fact that, uh, the county executive has had numerous conversations with, uh, numerous community groups, um, numerous advocacy groups, numerous citizens, uh, over these past few months, and, and, and the concern that people face uh, with their housing situation is, is something that comes off, comes up often, and we fully, uh, support this bill and, uh, happy to answer any questions, uh, that come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron, this is Allison Pickard, Chair, District Two. Are there any questions for the sponsor or the administration about this bill at this time? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Maybe this is a question for Office of Law. Um, I'm trying to figure out, because I struggle a bit with, as a governmental entity, sort of inserting a prohibition on the private rent, um, between two parties, where we may not know what other terms are involved. Do we, have we done this in, in other instances? I, I, what, what would happen, for example, for someone who signed a two-year lease, and there was an automatic rent escalation of 5% at the end of the first year? How does that come into play? I mean, theoretically, there was a, a legitimate bargain and consideration for that at the time the lease was signed, and, and now we're sort of stepping in and changing those. I just, if you have any thoughts on that, I'd appreciate it.
Ms. Kenny?
Sure, Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Um, I think that the amendment that's coming up will speak to this, and it will apply only prospectively, so it will address those, those concerns. If there were already rent increases that were in place, we won't be interfering with any of those contractual rights.
Okay, thank you, Jessica Hare, District Seven. One quick follow-up, so, and maybe we could discuss this at the time of the amendment too, but I was unclear on whether applying prospectively, if, if the agreement, um, had, if the agreement had occurred before, but the rent increase wouldn't occur until, say, June 30, how that would come into...
Right, and, and we probably could talk about that when we are all looking at the amendment, but I think it would, um... It would apply to any rent increases that take effect after the effective date of the ordinance. So there could be a situation where the, it might come into play there.
Ms. Schuet?
I just wanted to add that the prohibition against the rent increase applies only upon the renewal of a lease. So it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't affect an existing lease that isn't being renewed. It's just, if it's just a two-year term, and on June, you know, 15, it's supposed to go up by a cer- a certain percentage, 5% or whatever it may be, that, this bill doesn't affect that, because it has to be an actual renewable, renewal of a lease. Hope that helps.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, um, what Councilman Pruski said about how other counties have handled this, and I, and I think it's interesting to look to them. I would note that if I lived or moved to Howard County at this point, I'd be able to go to church with up to 250 people. I would note that if I lived or moved to Baltimore County at this point, I'd be in phase one of Maryland's reopening plan in terms of businesses. It's interesting that the administration's main concern at this point is making sure, um, that rent increases don't come about to, to people who are free to contract, um, and, and who frankly, at this point, can't be evicted because of the protections that the governor and the county executive have put in place, but primarily the governor, um, but that we can't care enough to allow people to get back to work and to be able to go to their jobs to earn an income. So that's an interesting point to me. Um, but I think my, my question beyond my comments is this, um, this is all tied to the governor's catastrophic health emergency proclamation. How long do we expect that to last?
I don't want to speak for the sponsor, but you might want to ask the governor that. Mr. Pruski, did you want to respond?
No, I, I don't. Uh, certainly that's why we have the, uh, sunset protection along with the days, uh, in the bill. I mean, obviously, we'll address as we come, but I, I don't speak with the governor on a regular basis. A lot of decisions are either done by him or passed down to the county executive, so I have no idea.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Nathan Volkey, District Three, again. So, uh, I understand that Mr. Pruski and I, I wasn't necessarily looking to you for an answer, because I know the administration's weighed in, and I, I realize that they speak with the governor on a regular basis, I believe, um, because the county executive has been privy to some of these discussions on opening, reopening, and what's going to be allowed. So, I didn't know if there was any insight there, but I guess where I'm going with it is, based on everything that we are seeing and hearing, if this virus continues to be with us for the next nine months, 12 months, even longer, it's feasible that the catastrophic health emergency that's been proclaimed by the governor is going to continue that whole time, um, because as everybody knows, typically federal funding is tied to those types of declarations. As a result, it's unlikely that the governor is going to undo that declaration, um, at least anytime until, you know, sort of this, this situation is under control, um, to the extent that there's probably a, a vaccine or something, which is taking a while. So, you know, and I don't know when that'll be. I do say this, I think that in terms of where we are with the virus, you know, it, it's, it would be possible, as we've talked about, to start allowing businesses and churches and people to resume some function of life that they had before. Um, but, you know, ultimately, I have no idea how long this catastrophic health emergency proclamation is going to last. I'm very concerned, um, to tying anything that we do to someone else, to a third party. So I, I'm very troubled by that piece of this bill, uh, because I learned very quickly from our declaration back in March, and then our efforts to try to, uh, to reassert the county's, council's power, um, that once we give five votes to something and we tie it to somebody else, it's very hard to, to sort of, uh, to get that back and put that horse back in the barn. So with that said, uh, that's a very grave concern for me, and, and I don't know how, without addressing that, I'm going to be able to support this.
Um, I have a question, based on Mr. Volkey's... Uh, this is Allison Pickard, Chair, District Two. If, if we pass this bill tonight, and the council, but, and the catastrophic health emergency remains in place after schools are open and childcare is open, and all businesses are open, and everyone is back to work, could this, this council could go back and repeal this bill, correct? Is that correct, Ms. Schuet?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
Okay. So with that, again, this is Allison Pickard, Chair, District Two. You know, the roadmap to recovery that the governor has set forth has many stages, and until we're in full health and economic recovery, we're going to have people who have downsized their jobs and will, will be out of work, and therefore having... their jobs and will be out of work and therefore having trouble paying their rent, whether it's childcare issue, kids not in school, there's a lot. This is bigger than just, are you going to church this Sunday or not? So let's get clear on the rhetoric versus the reality. You don't have to vote for this bill, but we can, as a council, come back together and repeal it if the economic and job and evictions and things are in a different place three months from now, six months from now. We can, as a body, come back and repeal our own ordinance. With that, when I start talking, I know everyone knows where we are in the process here. Mr. Pruski, did you have anything to add? This is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, certainly, I wish I had the crystal ball to decide when a lot of things are going to happen. But I know that I've got renters in my district that are getting price gouged. And I think it's unfortunate that there's not even a state law that handles it. And I will tell you, I will reaching out to the delegation to ask them to introduce legislation, because I was quite shocked that we didn't have anything. And of course, when you add in the pandemic and the number of things that are there. Mr. Volkey, just to clarify too, the two hundred and fifty for Howard County is outside social distancing, and I believe the county executive's advocacy group, which Ms. Fiedler sits on, is going to be discussing that. And I don't know what their policy is. I don't know what plan to have it. So I do think things are starting to open up, and we pushed that. I think we've gone through that debate. But what I want to focus on here is renters and people in my district and throughout Anarona County that are going to be faced with some decisions. And I particularly think about someone who has a health issue or concern right now, or someone who doesn't have the ability to pay the rent, you know, to get out, and then you're asking that on top of that, a ten or twenty percent increase. I mean, there's no protection, so just let them be, let the free market decide. I mean, I just, I think this is a reasonable bill. I think the fact that you have people who normally either don't support or disapprove of some of the actions the council have come out and said that they are in favor of this bill because of being reasonable and understanding that, you wonder what, we are giving people breaks right now. We're giving that extensions. I think we need to look at it this way. Philosophically, if you have a difference, totally understand. But I got to help the people in my district and Anarona County because I know some of them are really hurting right now, and it makes me sick that you have somebody trying to abuse them with rent during a pandemic.
Seeing no further comments from my colleagues, we'll now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anything from the public on emergency bill number thirty-eight dash twenty?
Yes, Madam Chair, we had four submissions of written testimony. It was shared with and reviewed by the council, and it was posted on the county website.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The public hearing on bill number thirty-eight dash twenty is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number thirty-eight dash twenty.
Bill number thirty-eight dash twenty, an emergency ordinance concerning residential rent increases during catastrophic health experiences.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
I'm going to wait for it to get up on the screen. And we have to give that a minute. Amendment number one. This amendment clarifies that the prohibition against certain residential rent increases applies to the specific catastrophic health emergency proclaimed by the governor.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Councilman Andrew Pruski, so moved.
Is there a second?
Councilwoman Rodvian.
Is there any discussion on this amendment? Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm the sponsor. Obviously, this clarifies that it's the specific catastrophic health industry proclaimed by the governor. Just provide some clarity language on that. Thank you.
I think the administration weighed in on this already. Did you want to make a comment, Mr. Barron?
Thank you. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Appreciate the council's work on this clarifying amendment. We have no issue with it.
Seeing no comments from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two, I guess, after it's posted.
Amendment number two. This amendment provides that the bill applies prospectively and does not apply to residential rent increases that occurred before the effective date of the bill.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Councilman Andrew Pruski, so moved.
Is there a second?
Radvian, second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Pruski, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So Councilwoman Hare brought this up along with others when we were researching this bill. And one of the things that was discussed about what this applies to, this language, working with the law office, and Ms. Schuet, thank you so much, does apply prospectively. So certainly, anything that was applied prior would not happen, and you're looking at renewals. And so if somebody signed a contract, obviously, before a pandemic, like many other things, that wouldn't be impacted. So this kind of clarifies that and certainly asks for your support. Thank you.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is probably a question for the sponsor, but I'm just curious, does this amendment end up cutting off from support any tenants who may have already been negatively impacted by price gouging in their, in their, sorry, their lease renewals?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, Councilman Andrew Pruski. So the folks that reach out to me obviously have a lease coming up in June or July, so they were thinking ahead. Obviously, prior, I can't speak to any cases that I'm aware of, but legally, and I'm sure Ms. Schuet or others can kind of chime in about why this was added, but really, there are folks that had signed leases prior and had to do that. This, now, we're during the pandemic. So I'm trying to obviously deal with the issue at hand and trying to build some support. That's kind of where it came from. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski, Mr. Volkey, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I guess this is a question for the sponsor. How exactly does this help people who may have signed a lease a year ago that had a two-year renewal term that now just came up for renewal, but that person has lost a job or been laid off? How does this help them?
Mr. Volkey, this isn't the only thing that helps. We have renters assistance programs. As I said, the Maryland Housing Administration is also working on grants and other things. This is just one way to move forward. I'd love to go back if I could. I just don't think, number one, I'd get support my colleagues if you want to add an amendment to do that. But I think there were some legal issues that were concerned that too, that people had. So I'm just trying to do my part for folks that reach out to me, you know, going forward and trying to get as much support for the bill as possible. But I also have talked with the administration, just so you're clear for the record, that the rental assistance program with either CARESAC money or future money that we continue to add to that. So if we talk about, you know, one tool in the toolbox to help somebody, if I can help some folks, particularly constituents that reached out that are, you know, facing this. And also, as a former real estate agent, a lot of leases can go from year to year. But I will tell you, most of them go from July to July. They start around the summertime and go. So obviously, the emergency nature of this bill and helping as many people as possible. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this amendment? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number, six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment number two is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number thirty-eight dash twenty, as amended.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Point of order, was that a technical amendment or was that a substantive amendment? How is it that we voted on this in the same night without some sort of a suspension of rules?
It is an emergency bill.
And as a result, we immediately can vote on it even though amended. Okay.
That is correct.
Clarifying. I'm a nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number thirty-eight twenty is defeated.
Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? I'd like to remind everybody this evening that this is, we've had four meetings in May. This is, we go back to our regular scheduled programming, the first and third Mondays in June, including our budget, in addition to our budget meeting. So thank you, everybody, for hanging with us this month. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Lacy, so moved.
And a second?
Radvian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until seven PM on Monday, June first, 2020. Everyone be safe, stay well.